He gonna fill in for Wes?
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of the Glasgow City Council. We'll begin our evening with a pledge to our flag.
A pledge to the nation's flag, the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It remains standing. We'll ask Councilman Kirkpatrick to lead us in our invocation.
Fill your heads, please.
Dear Lord, thank you for today, and thank you for our great community that we serve. Lord, guide our thoughts and discussions so that we might thoroughly understand the task at hand tonight and the problems that need our attention. We seek your wisdom and knowledge to decide on actions that will truly give you glory, and, Lord, watch over the ones who keep our community safe. I ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Be seated. To get the evening started, we're going to ask our city clerk, Mona Simmons, to call the roll.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Trigg?
Here.
Norris?
Here.
Schumaker?
Here.
Neal?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Benel?
Present.
Burris?
Here.
Lowry?
Here.
All right. Hundred percent attendance. Thank you all for being here. The next item is to approve the agenda as it was sent to you back on Thursday. I will entertain a motion that we move forward with tonight's meeting using the agenda that was proposed back on Thursday. Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilman Neal? Any discussion about the agenda? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. So we're going to move with the agenda as it was presented, and the first item of business on that agenda is to approve the minutes from our council meeting back on January the 13th. You've had those in your possession. You've had a chance to look over them, and I will entertain a motion that we approve those and put them into the record book. Motion, Norris. Okay, is there a second?
And Lowry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the minutes from January the 13th. Is there any discussion about those minutes? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. The minutes are approved for the January the 13th meeting. The next thing we're going to do is we're going to move into, as I told you all the last time, we're trying to do a little bit better with some departments, bringing everybody up to date on where we are in the various departments and some of the good things that we have going on, which is important for the city leaders to know about these things. Wes Billingsley, who is the Street Department Superintendent, had a family emergency, and he's not able to be here tonight. This just happened this afternoon. But Jim McGowan, the Department of Public Works, who works collectively with Wes and Nick and a lot of other good people, Jim is going to fill us in right here because the Street Department has had a heck of a January, and we want to hear-
We have.
We want to, we have. We want to hear some good things about that and let everybody know where we are.
Well, as you all know, I'm a, as the mayor said, superintendent of Public Works. What we did this time, back on January the 4th, it was on a Saturday, we started brining roads and streets here in the city, and we had an event on the 5th, which was the next Sunday morning. We had plows come out and guys called in. I think by 7:00, 7:30 Sunday morning, we had four trucks out with guys plowing and salting the roads. Of course, we had pre-treated the day before, which helps out the roads, you know, start thawing and where we can actually get the snow and ice pushed out. We had another event the next weekend, as you know. It come on Saturday the 11th. We had brined about two or three days prior to that to help with the removal of the snow as well. And what we done in those basically nine days there, we used approximately 22,000 gallons of salt brine. We used a total of 75, 75 ton of salt on the roads. That's including what we spread and what we brined as well. Altogether, we had 85.75 overtime man-hours. And last one we had, it was textbook. We had- we brined on the temperature stayed in that range where the brine was really effective. And that Saturday morning, I think we were finished in four to five hours. And everything looked good. Of course, sun always helps out in a situation like that. We got, we had ordered 75, 75 additional ton of salt. We actually got it delivered at the end of last week. I think they brought the last load today of it, so. Any questions or anything? I tried to base that from-
I think it's important that you ask that because, you know, of all the things, if we have a couple of bad days trying to remove snow, we get a lot of questions. When are they coming over here? Why didn't they go over there? When are they going to be able to do this and that? And it's, you know, that's kind of what we're here for, is to answer those questions. And your neighbor might call you up and say, and it's kind of good to understand how this works, you know? And Wes and I have had this discussion, just like Jim and I have. It's, the secret is this getting this brine down before the rain washes it off so that the preparation will make it a lot easier to do the clearing.
Yeah, that's one thing about this last event. There was some rain expected prior to it, and we don't typically put that brine down, you know, just because washed off. But everything worked out good with it, and we start getting temperatures down to zero. That's when the brine doesn't do as good as say-
When there's several periods of time when y'all had like five trucks at a time on the road?
Yes, yes.
That's pretty good coverage.
It is. Of course, we, one of the things we do, I don't know if everybody's aware of it or not, but what we do, we start out with what we call priority ones. That's our routes to and from the first responders, police, fire, EMS, and 911 dispatch, and hospitals here in town. Our priority twos are the major collector streets for the local businesses, factories, and schools. Then we get into priority three, which is the minor collector streets that direct traffic to the major collector areas, you know, and residential areas. Of course, our priority fours are the residential streets themselves.
You said that the total tonnage usage of salt and brine was together? Like, how much salt did you use, just salt by itself?
75 ton, yeah.
So Jim, what percentage of our total stock did you use, and then you said you replaced half of it?
We can stockpile right at 200 ton, and we use around 75 to 80 ton of it. And like I said, we've got, we had ordered 75 ton back, and we're right at full capacity now. Just knock on wood, hopefully we don't need it.
Do they still have a reverse auction? Is that how we buy salt still?
They do, they do. I'm still a little bit in a gray area how that works, but if so much salt didn't get used throughout the year, the next year, you can actually get it at a reduced price. I think we got like $5 or less on the ton this time, so.
That's good.
I think we're paying $114 a ton for it now.
I'll compliment the Street Department. Did a good job.
Yeah, they did a really good job. Personally, myself, I logged close to 300 miles those two different- I called two different events. They were actually three of them. One of them was just as worse as the other one. But I put close to 300 miles on the vehicle myself, just checking roads and seeing the conditions of, right here in the city, so.
All right. When you buy this salt, does it, say you still got 100 tons left?
It'll be fine next year.
Fine next year?
It will.
And when do you buy? You just buy it as you need it, try to get you up to 225?
We've got what we've got, Randy. We've got two bays of them, and both of them hold close to 100 ton each. And once we start getting low on that first bin, we'll go ahead and order some more. And that's what we've done this time. We'll be getting our stock out of a bin that we hadn't been using. That way, we can kind of keep it rotating.
Does the price go down in the summer?
No, it doesn't. It's basically same price, you know, throughout the year on it.
Is it like tractor trailer loads of it, or is that what it comes in?
Well, it's big triaxle dump trucks. The reason we've got 75 ton, they'll haul 24, 25 ton of it at a time DOT triaxle. It's just like a truck comes out of the rock quarry, except it's got salt on it, and actually comes from Owensboro, what we, this last load we got, yeah.
So, Owens, that's my next question. That's kind of where you get that, okay.
They actually get it shipped in from salt mines out west, and that's, it comes across on barges and stuff like that. And that's where, when we order it, that's where it actually comes from, is Owensboro.
A little of that? Well, that's good information and good discussion and good questions. And if Wes was here, but you can chime in here too. One of the things that people don't think about is that if you mess up the roads, you mess up the garbage routes. And I think that we did a good job, Nick, of staying on track with- we didn't have any big problems of keeping the garbage collection pretty much caught up, even though the roads were difficult to deal with.
One of the first events that we had, it was on January 5th, you know, we actually plowed the snow and sorted more too. And by Monday morning, when our guys come in, we didn't have to put any chains on the trix trucks that day. But now, later in the week, the next, by the next Friday, we actually did. We had to put chains on everything, so.
All right.
All of our guys are phenomenal. They can put a set of chains on a trix truck in 30 minutes. It's really quick for those guys because they've actually done it several times.
Yeah, we were pretty blessed with the crews that had to work through less than normal conditions, for sure.
We lost two sets of chains that goes on the snow plows. And when I say sets, there's left side and right side. That's actually two, what I call two sets of them. We got a phone call from a citizen that asked, was there been any chance we could have lost a chain? Yes, there was, so we made arrangements to go back and actually get one of the chains that we lost, so.
That's good. That's good.
It's good people sees anything like that, that they call in, let us know, you know?
Anything else y'all are curious about, about snow removal? You've given us a good synopsis of what turned out to be an excellent process of clearing the roads, Jim.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you all.
Appreciate that. And if you see Wes out, y'all congratulate him too because they were proud of the work that they did, as they should have been. Okay, we're going to move forward now with some old business. Rich?
First item is an ordinance rezoning property located at 110 Physicians Boulevard. It appearing that the owner applicant Kentucky Industrial Alliance LLC has requested a zoning change for the property at 110 Physicians Boulevard, containing 2.59 acres in the city of Glasgow, from OP, which is the Office and Professional District, to a B3 Highway Service Business District. A schematic drawing of the property subject to rezoning is attached as Exhibit A. A hearing was conducted by the Planning and Zoning Commission on December 16th, resulting in the unanimous recommendation that the property be rezoned from OP to B3. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission are forwarded to the council and are hereby adopted by the council and are attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the city of Glasgow as follows. One, the findings and recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission, copies of which are attached as Exhibit B are approved in all respects. Section two, the zoning for the property at 110 Physicians Boulevard here in Glasgow, containing 2.59 acres, is rezoned from OP to a B3 classification. The real property covered by the ordinance being more particularly described in Exhibit A. Section three, all future development of the property shall comply with the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the council on December 30, 1991. And lastly, section four, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right, you've heard the second reading of this particular ordinance. Since it is second reading, we will need to have a roll, call, vote. Clerk? I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead. I need a motion that we approve it on second reading.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Now let's bring it home by doing a roll, call, vote. Mona?
Neal?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Benel?
Yes.
Lowry?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Trigg?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schumaker?
Yes.
All right, the ordinance is unanimously approved. Some things under new business that we need to talk about.
Next item is a resolution declaring certain police department property as surplus. That whereas the Glasgow Police Department possesses certain personal property, which is more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A. Whereas the personal property represents property that was seized by the department and is not needed by the department. And whereas it would be suitable and consistent with the public interest for the personal property to be declared surplus and its disposition authorized according to law. Now therefore, in light of the foregoing recitals, be it resolved by the city as follows. Section one, pursuant to KRS 82.083, sub-paragraph three, the following written determinations are made. A, the property is to be surplus is the personal property more described on Exhibit A. B, there has never been any intended use of this property by the department because it was acquired by seizure. Subsection C, the reason why it is in the public interest to dispose of the personal property is that the seized property is not needed for the department's operations, and the funds to be derived from its sale would be used to fund the department's ongoing needs. Subsection D, the disposition to be used shall either be by public auction or by any other means permitted by KRS 82.083. Section two, the property described on the attached Exhibit A is hereby declared surplus. Section three, the property shall be disposed of by a public auction or any other means authorized by the statute. Section four, Mayor Royce shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to take any and all action necessary in order to carry out the actions contemplated herein.
You've heard the reading of the resolution, some surplus property that we need to dispose of, and I will entertain a motion that we approve this resolution.
Motion, Kirkpatrick.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Neal? Any discussion on this resolution? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. We'll declare this property surplus. Chief, we'll be doing that, we'll have our own auction, or we'll do this on Gov. Deals? Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Rich?
Next item is a resolution approving a permanent easement and right-of-way with South Central Rural Telecommunications Cooperative, Inc. Be it hereby resolved by the city of Glasgow that it approves the granting of a permanent right-of-way in easement with South Central Rural Telecommunications Cooperative, Inc., a copy of which is attached here too. Be it further resolved by the city that Mayor Royce shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to execute the attached document for and on behalf of the city.
All right, you've heard the resolution pertaining to this easement and right-of-way with SCRTC. I entertain a motion that we approve this resolution. Horace? Okay, Benel, a motion, and Norris has a second. And now, upon the floor, can be any kind of a discussion that you might want to have about this.
I might just give a little history to this. This is a major trunk line for South Central. It's been there for well over 15 years. The statute provides that they are automatically given an easement, but they wanted something in writing to record at the county clerk's office. Part of the property is owned by the city. The other part is owned by the Justice Center Corporation. They've already approved it, and this is just to put to record what is really already there.
All right, I'll entertain a motion that we, or I just did approve that, didn't we?
Yeah.
Okay, we still need to do the resolution about the Fire Department surplus property. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm working ahead right here. If there's no further discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Okay, the resolution is passed.
The next item is another surplus resolution for the Fire Department this time. That whereas the Glasgow Fire Department possesses certain personal property, which is more particularly described on Exhibit A. Whereas this personal property is no longer needed by the department, and the department has sufficient equipment available to meet the needs of the department. Whereas it would be suitable and consistent with the public interest for this personal property to be declared surplus and disposition authorized according to law. Now therefore be it hereby resolved by the city as follows. Section one, pursuant to KRS 82.083, sub-paragraph three, the written determinations are as follows. The property to be surplus is the personal property described on Exhibit A. B, the intended use of this property at the time of its acquisition was for the use and benefit of the department and its operations. C, the reason why it is in the public interest to dispose of the personal property is due to its age and the fact that there are other similar pieces of equipment within the department which are capable of meeting all of the needs of the department, and continuing to maintain and keep this personal property would be redundant. Sub-paragraph D, the property described in Exhibit A is hereby declared surplus. Sub-paragraph E, the method of disposition will be by public auction or by any other means permitted by the statute. Section three, this property shall be dispersed, excuse me, disposed of by any means authorized by law, including public auction. Section three, Mayor Royce shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to take any and all action necessary to carry out the actions contemplated herein.
Okay, you've heard the resolution, some surplus property for the Fire Department. I entertain a motion that we approve this resolution.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion before we vote? Any discussion about the Fire Department surplus property?
Mayor, I have a question. Do the departments decide, department heads decide, on how they surplus their things, whether it be on the web or the auction, or how does that work?
It's done department by department.
Okay.
Most of them use Gov. Deals. We have not, in my recent memory, had some sort of a public auction other than going to Gov. Deals. That seems to work out pretty well. Chief Tinsley, is that what's going to happen with this property? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Good discussion. Yes, sir, Randy?
Well, I just thought of something. Who makes that determination? Is there one person in the city, or the department head decides?
Department head.
Okay. And where does the funds, where do the funds go from those sales? Go back to their department or back to the city?
To their departments, because they operate on their own budget. Uh-huh. Uh-huh. Goes right there. All right.
Do they all get sold?
Uh, well, not always, no.
Or what happens that just write it off, or, like, how does that work?
Well, really-
Is there a certain amount of time that they stay on? I have no idea.
Yeah, there's a certain amount of days, certain, the time on, go ahead, chief. On gov, particularly, we do a lot more police equipment than we do fire equipment.
Usually if it, if it doesn't sell, we'll either, like, we have some cars that didn't sell, then we'll take, we'll take them across the scales and sell them that way, but usually everything sells. If we don't think it sells, we don't put it on gov deals, and we'll just scrap it.
Dispose of it, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, all right. What other questions do we have? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wondered where the funds went back, if it came back to you, because you're going to allocate them again till next year, on earth, they just-
It, it stays within the department that was originally, that it originally belonged to, because they have to balance their own budget with what they have. All right. No further discussions, then I will call a question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are going to declare that property surplus as well with the fire department. There is in your packet a notification just for you to know about, it's an executive order, executive order 2025-295, updating the standard operating procedures of the Glasgow Police Department regarding procedures, and I think, Danielle, that is in this packet as well, right? That SOP on the police department? Okay, yes. The SOP that we, that's just for information is in this packet, is that right?
On the back.
Okay, it's on the back, okay. All right, just want to make sure we have it.
Changes should be in there as well.
Yes, uh-huh, mm-hmm, okay. All right, so that's just for information. There's no vote required, it's just an executive order, but I want everybody to know where they can see it, in case they're curious to know about this change in the SOP at the police department. Sometimes these things happen, and you just need to go back and read those.
I have a question before we move along. Are the changes highlighted, or are they just, is the whole thing changing, or?
It's, it's the change of the, of the SOP regarding vehicles. This is number 21.2. That's the section that was changed.
Okay.
So just look over that. If you have any questions, I mean, we, there's no time element to it, we can get any answers if you're need for clarification on what this particular SOP change does bring up to date, we can get a more direct answer. It's just compact for the purpose of this presentation. We have a big event coming up on February the 6th, and our council members know, and I want our new members to know, that the annual meeting of Baron Inc. is going to be held on Thursday, February the 6th, at the Cave City Convention Center, 5 until 8. We, the city of Glasgow is a big sponsor of Baron Inc., and we have those tickets, and we would love for, we'd love for 100% attendance. It doesn't cost you anything because it's part of our arrangement with Baron Inc., so anybody that would like to go on the night of February the 6th to the Cave City Convention Center, call April Russell, she's the one that is taking the, the census, the count, the head count for that, so we want to be sure, and let her know within the next few days, so we can make sure that we have enough tickets for that. And then we have on February the 10th, we will reconvene for another meeting of the Glasgow City Council. That's all we have on the agenda for today. At this point, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Motion.
From Councilman Neal, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion about why we should stay? Well, then we'll say all in favor indicate by saying aye, and opposed like sign, and thank you all very much for your attendance and for paying attention to these important decisions we have to make.